Many times, there's the understanding that there's no such thing as a normal call, and they don't know what to expect. And so, God, we pray that you'd give them that peace, the knowing that you'll keep their loved ones safe. God, as we consider the things that are on the agenda here tonight, we pray for wisdom and insight. We ask for unity and understanding, God. And let each one of us take on that same characteristic that you displayed, and that we would think of each other as more important than ourselves. We thank you for these things, and your watchful hand over us now. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. We'll start out with roll call, please. Shelley?
Thank you. Albertson?
Here.
Bueller?
Here.
Danforth?
Here.
Manti?
Here.
Riefenberger?
Here.
Roby?
Here.
Solum? Absent. Thorson? Absent. Tepper?
Here.
Vilhauer?
Here.
Thank you.
As it's obvious, I am presiding over the meeting this evening as the mayor is away for other business. We'll start out with the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion by Beth, second by Glenn. Those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Number two in the agenda is approval of agenda. I will mention that we have stricken item number three from the agenda this evening. Apparently, that needs a little more work. And so, we'll move on to number four on the agenda this evening. And this is an application for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and wine license.
We need to approve the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need to approve the agenda. I entertain a motion for approval.
Don't.
Okay. We got a motion by Randy, second by Mike. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Now, we'll move on to number four on the agenda. Application for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and wine license to El Tapia Tope- I don't know how you say that. Incorporated Two, doing businesses El Tapio at 715 Ninth Avenue Southeast. At this time, I would open a public hearing for that. Do we have anybody in the audience who'd wish to speak to this issue?
Carlos and Carlos are here.
If you'd like, if you'd like, you can certainly speak to this. It's up to you. If there's anything you need to say? Okay. Anyone in the council have any discussion issues with this? Okay? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
Motion by Beth.
Second.
Second by Dan. Discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. On to number five on the agenda, ordinance number sixteen dash nineteen, creating a new chapter of Title Twelve for licensing and regulating ambulance services for the city of Watertown. And I think I'll hand this over to Justin if I could, if you want to take that away.
Certainly, Mr. President. I know that we have Chief Krantz here to answer any of the questions of the city council. I worked with Chief Krantz in helping create this ordinance. And what it is designed to do is to allow for a framework of regulation for any kind of private ambulance service that may want to set up shop within the city limits of Watertown. And beyond that, if you have any questions, feel free to ask myself or Chief Krantz.
Thank you. I just want, before I forget too, I just want to mention that on the consent agenda, we had ambulance write-off receivables for fourteen thousand nine twenty-eight. That was actually changed. Somebody actually came and paid up, I guess, a little bit. So today, so that's changed to fourteen thousand eight fifty-three oh eight. So I just thought I should make sure everyone's aware of that. Okay. On number five, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
Motion by Glenn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Riefenberger. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we want a discussion?
Doug, what if we did not pass this? What would, could somebody come in? And are there any restrictions then, as far as, or requirements of somebody to come in?
Not, not, not at the city level. State level would not change. Any of the other federal regulations would not change. It's just the city, the city level that it would change. And it's, it's there just, it's kind of for the community protection to assure that if someone did want to come in and start setting up shop, that they would provide the same amount of quality, that standard of care that is already provided. And that's pretty much what it is. It's, you have a chance to look at the track history of that, that company, what they've done. Last thing, you really probably, you want to look at things like, they can close up shop just like that and move, move on if business is down, or whatever the case may be. So it's just kind of a protection for the community to make sure that if someone did come in, whether it be for the transfers only, or for, there's, there's other ones out there that look at nine-one-one service too, but most of it's just for the transfers. So that's, that's all it is, is a little protection. It doesn't stop them from, say, if they want to move in and get some business, they can move right outside the city limits and set up a shop and do the same service. It won't affect any businesses, clinics, hospitals, nothing like that in town from the current business. It will not affect wheelchair services. It will not affect anything that the nursing homes need, the stretcher services. So it's pretty much just that advanced life support interfacility transfer within the city limits of Watertown. So it would not even affect currently, like a Grant Roberts that provides, also provides some service. It doesn't change anything for them as well, so.
My understanding, some other cities have similar ordinances. Is that accurate?
That is correct, Councilman. Rapid City has an ordinance. In fact, you know, we looked at Rapid City's ordinance pretty intently in developing this language. Aberdeen has an ordinance. I believe Sioux Falls has a bare bones version of this ordinance. And a number of communities throughout, you know, various other jurisdictions outside the state have similar ordinances derived from a common ordinance reference guide, so.
Rapid City have similar service tests? I mean, is it the city-provided service, or is it private service?
It's a city-provided service via EMS.
I can see where it protects the, the whole community, put it that way. If somebody were to come in and, just like you say, all of a sudden open shop, and that creates a hardship on the fire department, and pretty soon you let some people go, and all of a sudden, they just up and leave town. I mean, then, then the whole city is kind of left holding the bag and...
And the other part of that is if, if there is truly a need for that, that type of service that we, we can't provide, that's, that's where this would come into effect, that someone could apply for that.
Yeah. Like you say, it's not going to stop anybody from coming in, doing transfers or anything. It's just as far as actually setting up shop within the city proper, so.
Exactly.
Doug or Justin, I, I remember fifteen, twenty years ago, whatever, whenever it was, I mean, the mess that it was either Brandon or Sioux Falls had, when somebody else tried to enter in for what, nine-one-one service, or whatever. I mean, you know, accusing of a monopoly situation down there. Any comments or thoughts, I mean, relative to that, what we're doing here, Doug? I'm all in favor of this ordinance, but that thought did cross my mind as I was looking at this.
Yeah. That is usually for, that one was over nine-one-one services. That bounced around down there a little bit between a couple different services. And actually, the city was considering also taking, taking back the nine-one-one services throughout the fire department, but it ended up going to a private service. But yeah, that was, that was over the nine-one-one services. Most of these, these private companies aren't really too interested in the nine-one-one services. They're more interested in the, the transfer business, so.
And I would add to that, Councilman, with regard to concerns about, you know, government monopolies, or that being a potential for a liability with the city. You're dealing with a service that is naturally a part of the police powers of a municipality. What we're doing here is trying to create a framework to allow for private entities to come in, to know what the rules are, and then to make sure that those rules are up to the standard, the lofty standard set by Watertown Fire Rescue. And so, I would say, if anything, this, you know, helps us out more in that respect.
If we didn't have standards like this, or an ordinance like this, if somebody were to come into town, and something were to happen, basically, we probably could be held liable, couldn't we? Without an ordinance in place?
You know, that's a fair question, Councilman Tepper. You know, I think Chief Krantz made reference to the fact that the state has a number of different regulations that impact and ensure a certain set standard for operation of emergency vehicles. And what you don't see in our ordinances is a lot of that material, like training standards, equipment standards and the like, responsiveness capabilities, those sorts of things. So what we're trying to do is make sure that those things that state law doesn't quite get to, that Watertown Fire Rescue embodies in terms of quality of service that we have in the ordinance.
Any other discussion? Okay. I think we have a motion on the table. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next, we have a first reading of ordinance number sixteen dash twenty, amending section twenty-one point zero two one zero, twenty-one point seven three one zero, twenty-one point eight zero zero six, and twenty-one point nine nine zero one, of the revised ordinance of the city of Watertown to clarify punishments for violator, violations of Title Twenty-One. And again, I'll turn this over to Justin. I think this is a housekeeping issue, is it not?
That's correct, Mr. President. The, the impetus for this ordinance was just sort of a review of Title Twenty-One, and looking at the fact that certain chapters had punishment provisions in them for the specific chapters within our zoning ordinance. Whereas, we had at the very end, a chapter twenty-one ninety-nine that supposedly was the punishment for, or at least was written in such a way, that someone would interpret it as being the punishment provision for the entire title. What this does, purely housekeeping, purely non-substantive, is it makes sure that chapter twenty-one ninety-nine is the punishment provision for the entire title, and condenses all of it into one, one provision for punishment purposes. The reason why chapter twenty-one ninety-nine was chosen, and not the other provisions to be sort of the house for punishment in our title, is because we have a provision in our ordinances elsewhere that provides that the chapter ninety-nine in every title save Title Thirteen is supposed to be the punishment chapter for that title. And so, we're just making sure that everything fits together. And one last thing, I would say, rest assured that our existing punishment framework for Title Twenty-One is fine substantively. There's nothing wrong with it. I can, you know, enforce it as it stands right now. With this ordinance, all it does is clarify to the public that this is the punishment provision, so.
Thank you, Justin. Any questions, anyone? Okay. If not, we'll move on to number seven. This is a consideration of change order number two, to the contract with Kale Excavating LLC for the street and storm sewer construction project, increasing the contract amount to twenty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-four cents. Shane, if you'd like to address that?
Thank you, President Bueller. Yeah, this is a change order number two, is adjusting all the quantities from our planned quantities to as-built. And it does increase the contract in the amount of twenty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-four cents. Primarily, a lot of those, that dollar amount, were requested changes to driveway widths and, and things by the various property owners along the project. So they've actually requested wider driveways than what we were planning, and some other adjustments in quantities over the project. So with that, even despite the increase in the contract amount, we anticipate that all of the assessments along the project are below what our initial estimated costs were. So this should be a, a pretty good project for those folks that initiated it and are participating.
Thank you. Any questions for Shane? All right. We'll move on to number eight. Consideration of change order number three, final to the contract with Crest Stone Builders.
Bruce, we need to do a motion in a second.
Do we need council action on that one?
Yeah.
We do? Okay. All right. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Beth, second by Mike. Any additional discussion? Okay. If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Number eight. Consideration of change order number three, final to the contract with Crest Stone Builders Incorporated for the Uptown Alley Parking Lot Reconstruction Project, increasing the contract amount six thousand seven hundred and five dollars and ninety-four cents. Again, I guess Shane, you're, you're on the, on the hook again.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller. Again, yes, this is a slight increase over the current contract. It does bring the total contract up to two-hundred and sixty thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. This is still well below our engineer's estimate and our project budget. And I think it will, you know, we easily justified the quantities and work that was done on this project, and we recommend approval of the final change order.
All right. Thank you. Questions?
I just wanted to say that it just looks better every time I drive through there. It's really a nice change, and all the work is being done very well.
All right. Great. I entertain a motion then for approval.
So move.
By Dan. We have a motion by Dan, second by Randy. Additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Onto number nine, under old business. Couple of things that I kind of added to, that I'd like to discuss, I think, this evening anyway, just some updates. And I wanted to start out with the weir project. I asked Shane if he'd be kind enough to give us a little bit of an update on where things are with the weir we've been discussing. Yeah, right where we are.
Thank you. We are in the final process of finalizing our contract documents. We'll be advertising for bids here within the week. We plan on taking bids and opening them on October twenty-seventh in the afternoon, and with the anticipation that that would be on the agenda for the following council meeting, for you folks to approve. Of course, that is pending. We, our word from the Corps of Engineers folks that are permitting this is that we should have a permit by the end of October. So hopefully, we time our advertising and award such that we begin work as soon as we can after receipt of, receiving that permit, so.
So the installation would occur yet this fall, is our intent?
That's our intention, yes.
Okay. Great. Just one other thing, too. We, I just wanted to update everybody a little bit. We had a meeting today on the, the sign ordinance changes. First District's been working on that, plugging away on revising that ordinance. Right now, the intention is to probably meet, I would say, at least, to me, it seems like we're going to have to meet a couple of more times, our group, until we get an ordinance in place that we would want to present to the public. And I think beyond that, I'm suggesting that we have one, if not two, maybe even three, if it takes three meetings, with the public. What we'd like to do is enlist folks from the business community, some of the sign people, some of the businesses that have a, an interest in signage, be a part of that group, so that they have an opportunity for their input. And then, beyond that, I think what would happen next, the next step would be to bring it to a work session, and then beyond that would be a public hearing, and then obviously, if, we would bring it to a vote for the, for the council for approval. So work is continuing on that, and I think we're, we're coming along. We had some challenges with the, the legal ruling that, that we ran into with verbiage on signs. We can't really legislate what's on the sign to a degree. I mean, if it's obscene and that kind of thing, we certainly can. So I just wanted to give an update on that. One other thing, too, I thought I'd talk about real quick, is the softball project. You know, there's folks out there in the public that are concerned, we're not going to open up. And I think that, I'd say it's ninety-nine percent sure that we will be able to play on that in the spring as scheduled. There will be work continuing through the spring. One thing we don't have is we have not been able to plant grass between the fields and around the concession area. They're still doing some work in there, and equipment's moving in and out of there. So what they plan on doing there is dormant seeding, seeding, so that we can get grass coming up in there right away in the spring. But as far as the grass goes in the outfields, it's, it's looking really, really good. And then, of course, there's some landscaping, things that we're, we're still working on. But if you haven't had a chance to go out and look at the project, I would recommend that you take a look at it, because it's really looking good. It's coming along very nicely. Anyway, anything?
Bruce, can I ask a question about the weir? Back, back up a second. Do we have any kind of estimated budget for that?
We hired a consultant to look at what our plan, design was, and they were managed to scale back the scope of our project. In other words, we were looking at twenty-foot-deep sheets for driving the pile, and now we're down to ten feet. So we, we believe that our estimated cost is greatly reduced from what we had previously anticipated. However, we have not, as a community, you know, done this type of weir, or pile-driven weir in a while. So our estimates are still just that, they're estimates, but we do expect that we've now fine-tuned our design to bring those costs down as far as we can.
Okay. So Shelley, then, we haven't decided yet where that's coming from, or, I don't know, we discussed, and we all pretty well agree we have to deal with it while we can, but we haven't decided where that's coming from out of our budget yet. We don't anticipate, though, that being beyond what we've got for monies to work with? Okay.
We're looking at the high end, about four hundred?
We, based on our latest projections, we should be well underneath.
Yeah. That'd be on the high end, to be four hundred. Right.
Shane, to go along with that, I've, I've had people ask me again, and we've talked about it, about the river, about all the stuff that's in the river, and because it's low, somebody coming in and going through it and trying to, I wouldn't call it dredge it, but maybe clean the river out a little bit, that apparently, there are things in the river. And the river is way down, and it'll be even more down when the weir is in there, because that water won't be allowed to go through there. So is that, I, I did talk to the mayor about it, and he was going to check to see what a firm here in town could do about it, and, and I really haven't gotten back to him, because I didn't realize he wouldn't be here tonight, because I was going to ask that question tonight.
Okay. So I think I'm hearing you right. Dredging is probably not the correct word. We are obligated to clean up deadfalls, trees that have fallen into the river, that kind of thing. We, we don't need permits to, to take that out, because those create flood hazards. Naturally deposited sand and things like that do probably require a permit, and we're not pursuing that with the Corps currently. But to get all the garbage that could be collected on those tree branches, and say, you know, I mean, if old tires, or, or somebody dumps an appliance along the bank, that's the kind of cleanup project that we could anticipate getting done fairly quickly.
It would, it would seem like this would be a great time to do it now.
Right.
People are telling me there are refrigerators in there, and I've even heard somebody say car bodies, but I don't think it's deep enough to hide a car body.
But anyway, that would be what I would anticipate a project would be, is to clean out the non-intended, natural, you know...
Yeah. They'd almost have to be visible, though, to be able to...
Correct.
Yeah. It'd have to be visible debris that, in other words, you'd have to go through the process of getting...
Right.
...approval through the Corps and to...
Pretty much annually, there's usually at least one tree that falls into the river, you know, that needs to be removed. That, that's a common occurrence. So, and then, if somebody throws a tire in, or, or something like that, it's good to go clean those out. I know for a fact, there's a couple tires on the bank behind the Little River City area. And we're going to go fish those out as long as the river's low and get rid of them, you know, until they end up in the landfill. So that's the kind of cleanup I would expect.
While we're talking about that, you want to give us an update on the bridge?
Well, the bridge, they took off the old deck, and they're waiting, or doing some minor modifications to the bridge piers and, and that kind of work right now. And then, when the new T-sections get moved into town, they'll just start lifting them in place with a crane. So that work should be done by the end of the month, weather permitting, so.
You might want to just mention what bridge you're talking about.
Okay. South Broadway Bridge, yes. So, but no, that's, that project should come along fairly fast.
Thank you. Anything else for Shane? Any additional old business?
I don't really have anything for Shane, but I have a, I just have a comment. I've been asked again several times about the garbage collection around the lake, and the fact that we don't pick up grass and those kinds of things on the Friday when we pick it up. So people who mow their yards on the weekend wouldn't get, they actually probably couldn't mow the next weekend then, because the garbage gets collected, the grass and those kinds of things do not get collected. And I'm wondering if that's, is that an option? That we collect the, you know, we change that to where people, where we don't come in on Mondays and do that? We collect the garbage at that Friday, but not the grass.
Are you suggesting that they would collect grass at a different date? Just grass on a different date, then?
Well, I, I don't know. We have these trucks that go out. So they would, well, I think what I'm saying is maybe the grass and so on would go out the same day that the, just like we do now. I mean, they just don't collect grass now. And people that cut it every week, now can, they basically have to skip a week, because they fill their barrels on the weekend.
Just to clarify, we're talking about the, on the holiday schedule, right, Dan?
Right. The holiday schedule.
From a practical standpoint, we won't have this, because I, I hear the same concerns about the grass clippings, that from a practical standpoint, that wouldn't come into play until, what, Memorial Day now, as far as...
Unfortunately, not. October tenth is a holiday, and we'll have a Friday pickup before that.
And that'll be that much more, then, because of the leaves.
I can visit with the superintendent of the landfill and visit with him about why they do or don't, wouldn't be collecting that. I, this is the first I've heard that they aren't collecting everything, because on a weekend that recycling would be scheduled, you'd have recycling, lawn clippings, and garbage would all be, could potentially be sequenced together.
I don't think so, Shane. I don't think that's the way it happens. I don't think.
I'll confirm that, and we'll have a discussion.
Well, it sounds like an issue with Mike Burger, probably.
Yeah, we'll have a discussion.
Okay. Thanks. Anything else for old business?
I do have an update on the Highway Eighty-One project. It's kind of old news, but we had a conflict with a sanitary manhole up at the intersection of Eighteenth Avenue. The manhole was going to end up in the curb line, so we did some investigating and found out that we could fix that manhole very simply by putting a new cone section on it. And if you're not familiar with manhole cone sections, they can either go straight up to where the, the hole is in the middle of the manhole, or you can build one that has a hole off to the side. It's called eccentric and concentric. Eccentric is off to the side. So what we did is we, we put a new cone section on to allow it to not be dead center in the curb, and put it in the pavement. So consequently, it cost about eleven hundred dollars to get that work done. It will be, this council does not have to take any action on it. We're running the work through the municipal utilities contract with the contractor, and all the city will see as a bill to pay it and get it done. But it was very minor, but I just wanted you to know that when you see that bill come forward in the near future, that was what the nature of the work was, so.
Okay. Thank you, Shane. Anything with the, for new business this evening? All right. Do we have, does anyone have a need to go into executive session? Any liaison reports tonight?
Not a liaison report, just a comment, though. Several of us yesterday, including the mayor, attended the ceremony at the Readiness Center, renaming it in honor of...
renaming it in honor of Ernie Edwards. Just want to say how blessed we are in the community to have someone of Ernie's caliber over the years in so many different facets and very appropriate that that building was named after him or is being named after him.
Thank you, Glenn. Anything else? Any other liaison reports?
Just an update from the golf course, the Cattail Crossings Golf Course. The, one of the things that they would like to do is put a driving range, a piece of cement and then a cover on that so you can go out and drive balls at any time and not tear up the turf so terribly bad. And what's, what's happened, and I think it's a great thing, most of us agree that the kids should be out there using the golf course. When they turn sixty or seventy, middle school and high school kids loose on a driving range, it has really made a huge impact on that driving range. It really got torn up badly and of course, we had that state tournament here and then people came in and it was really kind of a mess. So if they had the cement with this carpet covering on it, then Todd and Levi both thought that would be an excellent addition. Well, as it turns out, the Watertown, the Arrow Booster Club is really interested in helping pay for that. The school system obviously, I think, is going to be involved in it hopefully because they're the ones who get free use of the golf course and whether it's cross-country or whether it's golf practice or golf meets. So, and then the city, it's a city-owned, so our hope is that we can do something similar to, or a three-way, split the cost of putting that on. And it looks like it's going to be about a twelve thousand dollar deal, so it's a lot more than I thought. But it's six feet wide, I think, or five or six feet wide and two hundred feet long. So with some real durable carpet on it, so it's not something that's going to just go away. But then you go out there early spring and start using it and especially when the kids hit there then.
They'd have a little rubber tube then for teeing up the ball in there too? I would imagine.
So just a, it'll probably go.
That's a great idea. I think that's a great idea.
We're hoping to get that decided this week by the school and then the Booster Club and then I'll, or somebody, Jay or somebody will come back to Shelley and ask for dollars from the city. We still have some money left for that renovation project out there and apparently this can be over, a part of that can be taken and used for this, so.
All right.
Just an update.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Dan. Anything else? Any need to go into executive session this evening? Okay, if not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. So motion by Mike, second by Randy. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We are adjourned, thank you, folks.